My Thursday's better.
Thursday, come on up over here to the left side.
Thanks for having us. This is a really cool honor. I think last time I was at a board meeting was either for a class or we did like a presentation with Darlene Backus, so this is what we had in mind for me. I have my coaches with me. The rest of the team is playing football right now, so I don't know if they're going to try to sneak in or not. We're trying to organize it, but Jordan, who I get off this year, he was a huge contributor to the team this year. And so it's good that he's here with us. But I have Mike Anderson, my JV coach, Kyle O'Connor, Curtis Dunlap, Dalton Carlos, and Andy Fisher. And a cool thing, Mike was from CalMam, so that was kind of fitting. But the rest of the guys are former players and alumni at Oakfield. So it's like a pinch me moment for us to kind of be here with a sectional title, and it means a lot. Yeah, I mean, my feet haven't hit the ground yet. It still is surreal. And I can't thank these guys enough. I know I called them my assistant coaches, but they work just as hard as I do. And they put in a lot of time. And players like Jordan, who are just phenomenal young men, student athletes and role models. I'm the lucky one that gets to coach them and see them be heroes to other kids in school. Watching them walk down the elementary halls yesterday was fantastic. My kids took leave in the parade, too, and they were just excited to be a part of it. And I know over here, you guys had a pretty nice gathering, too, which was fantastic. And 46 years seems a long time, so I'm just thrilled that that's finally gone. You know, I'm glad it's back home, and I'm huge about community. And watching Triangle Park before we left, I don't know if any of you were there or if you saw it. That was like instant goosebumps and something I'll never forget. And then the parade. When we were coming back, the boys just kept looking out the window of the bus going, "Holy cow." Looking at all those cars and watching lights flicker and people outside their houses. At that time of night was unbelievable, and I'm glad that they got to experience that. So like I said, invited home and, you know, I forgot to mention to Alex Brasky and anybody else that was constantly asking questions, but there are a couple of people that I wanted to dedicate this to. One is a former player of mine, Tommy Manzella. I know he was looking over us throughout this run. And the boys would have made him proud how hard they played the game. So this goes to him, his brother Chase, and his parents. And then one person that was really our inspiration this year was Ralph Aston Jr., who was a good friend of mine, and we kept talking about fighting for what we wanted. And he's one of the greatest fighters that I've ever met. And giving him a hug before we went to CalMam was fantastic. So we talked before and after every game. We always dedicated wins to him. I never got a chance to dedicate this to him and his family, too. So those are kind of two people that I kind of left out and I want to make sure I recognize. But other than that, thank you so much for all of your support, the board and administration and the teachers. And just a fantastic run that I wish wasn't over because I miss those guys. It's only been two days, but it feels like weeks. And, you know, hopefully we can duplicate this every year because the way it ended was amazing. It's much better saying bye with smiles rather than tears. So I'm just very proud of my sons. I'm proud of these guys. And thank you again for everything that you guys do for us and all your support. It really means a lot. Thank you.
All right, congratulations. It was one the last time that they won it.
Well, there you go.
Yeah, one years old. So it was great to be a part of watching you make history. I can tell you that you and your coaching staff and your players are phenomenal. You know, your coaching staff does a great job with these kids. I see it, you know, when I pop into practice. I see it when, you know, I'm there watching you guys on the court, how you talk to the kids while you push them, you know, they listen. So congratulations to you and, you know, Jordan and the rest of the team. You guys were tired. You were the underdogs, obviously, going into it, and you didn't let that bother you. And you came out on top, and I couldn't be prouder.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Congratulations. Yeah, watching both you and the girls is great. We got the basketball season and a lot of fun to watch. I hope next year we'll be able to fill the stands with people and get to watch that in person.
I loved it. I absolutely loved it. It was fun to watch. We watched it every night for my kids to know the numbers of players. And, you know, "Come on, Guzman, what are you doing?" Like, it was just fun to scream at the TV for Oakfield. I hope your players know how big of a deal it is to have a banner up there. Something that I don't have the ability to say, but say, I felt like I was part of this team. And you guys really had a heck of a fun run to watch. And you're a big talk. You're all the way out in Kendall. They were talking about how great Oakfield looked. And in Brockport, I heard people talking about Oakfield. And it's awesome. It's just awesome. What people talk about, it's a program. See that shiny bald head of Mr. Kerkowski sitting in the stand? There, it means a lot, just like for our to be thrilled with Peter. I mean, a lot of school districts have that kind of lineage. And we're lucky enough to have that. And you're carrying it on, Ryan, and with the rest of your staff, which is awesome. It's great. So thank you so much, guys.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you.
I'm glad you had such a good time, and I'm glad all those students could have such an opportunity to play and have fun and enjoy it and carry on.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you, guys. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, I'm going to take my mask off, and I'm going to be a huge letdown compared to the group that just walked out the door. Little story, my high school basketball experience. I'm a Pavilion grad from the early 2000s. And I'm not kidding you when I say our girls' basketball team lost 94 to 4 in one game. So needless to say, we didn't win any sectional championships. However, I will say, last year Pavilion's girls' team did win sectional, so it is nice to see programs come full circle. So but anyway, my name is Karen Winters. I'm the director of the Genesee County Business Education Alliance. We call it BEA for short. I want to thank John, as well as school administrators and school board for allowing me the chance to come out and talk to you guys a little bit about our program. I'm hoping just to share with you what services and programs we offer. Sometimes people aren't familiar with the BEA and what OA students have access to. We also have had to adapt and change our programs a lot because of COVID. And we're looking ahead to when we will be pandemic free and will be able to offer services and different opportunities again. So I'll talk a little bit about that. As I go on, you guys are welcome to ask me questions at any point, so please don't feel like this is a lecturer's speech by any means. And Mr. Lamb, your wife Kendra, I don't know if she told you she used to serve on our board.
Yep, for sure. She presented to us.
Yep, yep. So that's our connection here to OA. So the Genesee County BEA, what we do is we are the bridge that fosters a relationship, a partnership, between our school districts and our local companies. We are trying to, you know, reach the kids to give them a sense of what are they skillful in? What do they have interest in? And how can that translate into a career? We really do try to push our local industries because, you know, let's be honest, there's not many people from all over the country that are flocking to Genesee County to work. But this is a great area to live in. It's affordable. And there's lots of, you know, opportunities with our companies. Coming into this job, I didn't realize how many industries and big, you know, large companies are actually here in our region. And this is important because think of the future economic success of Genesee County. We need to nurture that and help develop that workforce now so that we're all set 10, 15 years down the road. How we're funded, it's a mixture of many different things. So we're a shared service. So Genesee County School Districts pay a portion of what is my salary. As you can see at the bottom of your screen here, that is the cost to OA for this year for BEA services. And keep in mind that this is part of the BOSI's coser, so it is state-funded. We recognize that districts may be facing a lot of financial situations and, uh-oh.
Hey, cancel.
Cancel.
Wait, wait.
Oh.
Just got to follow.
All right. You know, I've had bad luck with technology. Every presentation, this happens. But anyway, we're keeping our rates for next year, the 2021-22 school year level, so that would be the same rate that always hang. Outside of school funding, we get some support from our businesses through membership. We also get some county funding as well as we do sponsorships and things. So that's, in a nutshell, how we're funded. Career exploration comes in many different forms, and what I always like to joke and say is that it's almost like the BEA is giving each school district a menu, and you pick off that menu what you want the BEA to do to support your district. And what I like about our program is that each district chooses to use the BEA services in different ways. So, you know, whereas Leroy is heavy into using junior achievement, you know, my Pembroke cohort's there. They prefer to do more mock interviews, job shadows, that type of thing. So, you know, we are probably most famous for our summer career exploration camps. You guys may recognize this gentleman here. That's Mr. Paul Osborne. He's a huge part in making that camp happen because it is a partnership with our county parks, teaching kids about construction careers. We normally run five or six different career exploration camps, but because of the pandemic, we are really having to assess how many camps we can offer this year. I will say probably what will be feasible for this summer is offering some culinary camps and our construction camps. So that is something that I will get the information out to our counselors or teachers so that that can be promoted with students for this summer. We do career day events, like our healthcare career day at GCC. Healthcare careers, it's a booming industry, but unfortunately, job shadows are just not feasible because of HIPAA regulations. So we brought the healthcare professionals to a neutral location, and the kids got to learn about those many different careers in a safe environment. So that was very hands-on and rewarding. If you're familiar with Blow With Your Hands, that big event that took place at Genesee County Fairgrounds back in 2019. BEA was a huge part in organizing that. We will be returning to a live event this year. It's going to be smaller. But, you know, we're looking at probably 20 students, two chaperones from each district that can send students to that event at the end of September. So more information is coming on that. We run career exploration field trips. I know I've set up some National Manufacturing Day tours for one of the technology teachers' programs here. I can line up classroom career speakers. Junior Achievement is a program I manage. I go out and recruit the volunteers, get the teachers their program curriculum, and it's more of that interactive, hands-on learning. And also, very important, job shadows, internships we've set up, as well as mock interviews. So we really are just a huge mixture of a lot of different programs to give kids more of that experiential career exploration learning. Specifically, I've worked with OA on here. I've done a lot of work with the elementary school for their career day that they have every May and June. How would the BEA supported, working with Sarah and Joe, the school counselors there. I helped recruit career presenters to lead those hands-on activities with the students. There is that K through 6th grade career day assembly that all the kids get to see and experience. So a couple of years ago, we had emergency management services come in, and the kids got to see from start to finish how do first responders receive 911 calls, firemen, police officers, dispatch, what first aid is provided at the scene of the incident. So that is a huge collaboration, a very cool career day that I encourage our other elementary schools to do because I know of no other school district that does the elementary career day quite as well as OA. And then the high school side, you do a lot of career presentations and student job shadows, too. And that's really just at the request of the teachers. But all of this, I'm always looking to expand opportunities with districts. So, you know, I was talking with, I'm sorry, is it Matt?
Yes.
Okay, I was talking with Matt, and, you know, we were chit-chatting and bouncing some ideas off. So if you all have ideas on where I could, you know, support from any, you know, any district initiative, please just let me know. Okay, and then, of course, what have we done? Because a lot of these programs are in person. How have we adapted? Actually, in your handout, it is more detailed information on what programs and services the BEA is providing for this school year in particular. So last summer, I spent the summer filming and interviewing different career professionals. You can actually see on the back of Page Street, these are the videos that I will be editing and uploading to YouTube. But all the careers at US Gypsum, Liberty Pump, Turnbull, kids have a chance to access those or will have a chance to access those videos at any time. And what's nice about that is it's localized career professionals. I didn't realize how lengthy video editing is, so this is a project that I hope to have completed when maybe the school year's over. It's been kind of busy. We've also been organizing virtual career presentations. So if a teacher wants to connect with, you know, the engineer from US Gypsum, it's very easy for me to do that. I would just, you know, need to get the Google Zoom information, and we can set that up. Junior Achievement, I've been doing some teaching for Junior Achievement in the elementary grade levels, too, completely virtual. And then I just want to show you guys real quick Blow With Your Hands Virtual. So as I mentioned, we were not able to have our actual Blow With Your Hands event in 2020. But we didn't want to lose the opportunity to continue to teach kids about those careers that they would have seen at a live event. So we launched this website, and the big challenge we find ourselves in is we've created this great website, but we need to get the information out to teachers and parent groups, I would assume, so that they have access to these materials. So on this website is agricultural careers, so 10 different agricultural careers that the kids could do some research on. I'm just going to show you vet technician jobs, for example. So on here, we have career overview. So what do vet techs do, their job duties? What are the earnings in New York State? Education, training requirements, job outlook. And then we give the kids a roadmap. So if they have an interest in what that technician does, what can they do here at OA in their home district? What are the CTE programs that they can take advantage of? Extracurricular activities and volunteer opportunities. All of that is listed here, and they could be linked directly to those specific opportunities. So if they wanted to volunteer with Purple Pony over in Leroy, here's the link so you can volunteer. Colleges and training, too. So where specifically can they go to get their degree to be a vet technician? As a parent, I like this section here. Your kid comes home with a bogus career, and you're like, okay, well, where's the jobs that are lined up with it? We put on here all of the companies that hire that technician so that they can see what are their chances of actually getting hired in that particular career. And then we wanted to make this as localized and personalized as possible. So we interviewed a local vet technician, and the kids can watch a video just detailing their experience and career, going through their training and what their day-to-day job is like. So this is a resource. We have over 34 different careers on here. My hope is that teachers, if you can't have the field trip this year, you can't have the presenter come in like they normally would, this is a good alternative in the meantime. And I like that this is also a tool that, you know, parents can use and have a good discussion with their child about the career that interests them. So, um, let's see here. I don't know how to go full screen again.
The present one of the right-hand corner.
There we go.
There you go.
Okay, awesome. Other thing, so this is about the Blow With Your Hands Virtual. Okay, the last thing I just wanted to mention to you that is available for graduating high school seniors. We have connected with businesses that are what we call premier workforce members. They're paying a higher membership to support the BEA Blow With Your Hands and really just get the word out, you know, better amplify their career opportunities. And these are lists of the companies who are those premier members. We're having a member-exclusive event at the CTE Center. It's going to be an outdoor event under a tent so that the kids can come still social distance and have a chance to potentially get hired for jobs. I would say that this is a great opportunity for those graduating high school seniors who aren't necessarily thinking the college pathway, maybe they want to enter the workforce. There's a lot of companies on here that are actually looking to hire right away. I know Bondwell, they're looking for the refrigeration technicians for their large refrigerator systems. Liberty Pump actually has lots of seasonal jobs, and their business is booming. Same with US Gypsum. There's lots of different careers there. So I encourage the OA seniors to come to this event. We have it two days because of the hybrid model that's going on at the CTE campus. So there's two dates to actually take advantage of coming to that and possibly getting hired. So it's kind of a cool new event that we're introducing this year. That's all that I had. Do any of you have any questions?
I have one. What is Junior Achievement?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry about that. So Junior Achievement, it's a national nonprofit that teaches kids in grades K through 12 about financial literacy, work readiness, and entrepreneurship. It aligns very well with social studies curriculum and economics curriculum for each grade level. And it's age-appropriate activities, like it comes in a kit with games, lessons. Those lessons are traditionally delivered by a volunteer that I train. The classroom teacher stays in the room at all times to make sure, you know, student behavior is managed. If there's, you know, topics that are kind of over the student's head, the teacher steps in to teach. It's a great program that I really encourage, especially elementary grades, to utilize because it just builds up their general understanding and knowledge of, you know, careers and also money management so that they're better prepared for middle and high school. So, yeah, that's a program that is definitely available for OA. If you guys are ever interested, I could get you lined up with it. Well, if that's it, I want to thank you again and, you know, hope you guys continue to support the BEA, and we will support you in return. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen. Of course, I can't read that.
Fourth from the bottom. Yeah, presentation.
Nope. I know, I'm trying to. It's like the mouse is very sensitive. There you go. Got it. Did you want to start?
Sure. So obviously, last Tuesday, we had a board budget workshop to review the the inner workings of our budget. The presentation today is more so for the community. I've asked Christine to kind of scale it back just a little bit. She's going to go over some figures. We're going to go over some information. But the scale to what we discussed with you last Tuesday, you know, certainly is for your eyes, for your knowledge. But certainly, we want to, you know, give the communities the highlights of where we're at, where we're possibly going. So again, if there's any questions in regards to the information we're presenting, nothing has really changed. Again, we just kind of scaled it back to, you know, make sure that we hit the highlights for the community members. So I wanted to start off again by stressing a good point here that our enrollment seems to be going up. I believe within the last 24 hours, I believe there was a handful of kids that, again, came to the elementary school. We're also receiving, they were obviously already considered on our enrollment, but we have many students and many families coming back to school from, you know, either being homeschooled or being virtually, completely virtual since the beginning of the year. So as you can see, certainly not like the census back in 2007, 2008. But over the last four or five years, our enrollment has remained the same. And this year, we have seen an influx of about 25 students. So that's, you know, that's good for OA. Obviously, our priorities, you know, really drive our decision-making when it comes to planning and preparing a budget. Our instructional priorities this year are first to support our literacy initiative. Obviously, the expansion of evidence-based instructional programs, our online intervention programs. Currently at the elementary and now into the middle school, we're providing students with multi-tiered systems of support that is academic, behavioral, and social-emotional learning. There's different tiers to all of that, and we're expanding that to the middle school. We're also expanding our teacher-led math and literacy teams to include the middle school. And again, at the tip of the iceberg here is all of this social-emotional learning. We are still partnering with the Genesee County Mental Health, with Rachel's Challenge next year, and Jacasa to support our students. As I mentioned before, our partnership with the Genesee County Mental Health and having Mrs. Letton here has been just a wonderful opportunity for our families to get the supports they need. The students have a chance to meet with her. She's doing a fantastic job, and we're looking to expand that for an extra half a day, you know, in the upcoming weeks and months, just because it is working so well. Obviously, fiscally, we want to maintain our current level of staffing, especially with our student population going up. We certainly want to maintain or enhance our educational programs and all of our extracurricular activities. We obviously want to maintain our transportation vehicle replacement plan, which we have. It's basically an eight-, nine-year cycle that we're, you know, getting rid of the old vehicles and purchasing new ones. It does save the district money in the long run because once vehicles, you know, hit a certain mileage, not only do the warranties wear out, but it's cost prohibitive to end up, you know, fixing them. So it's good to have, you know, an eight-year plan to replace those vehicles. Certainly, we have long-range facilities planning that we want to have minimal impact on taxpayers. It's very important for the community members and taxpayers to know, you know, more so for capital projects and capital outlay projects. They are aidable through the state. They're funded by the state at about 91%, 92%. So when we go out with a capital project of 15.3 million, it's really only costing the taxpayers about a million. So for every dollar that we spend, we're getting, you know, $10 worth of work. So please understand that that is a huge investment for districts to capitalize on just because it's impossible to keep the buildings and the campus running just with taxpayers' money. So we have to utilize and take advantage of these state-aid opportunities. We're going to continue on with our annual $100,000 capital outlay project. We're going to continue on with our annual one-hundred-thousand-dollar capital outlay project. Again, we get aided back the next year about ninety-two percent of that. So for about eight thousand dollars, we're getting a hundred thousand dollars' worth of work each and every year from the state. And obviously, we want to continue to support and our support our staff and our students with our technology. We only know what the fall is going to bring, and I think we're doing it right. I want to give kudos to Rob. His technology department has put us in a great place to, for kids to learn virtual, to learn remotely, or be here full-time, five days a week. So I think Oakfield is in a great spot and a great position because of Rob and our IT department. And, you know, we certainly want to make sure that, you know, we have the technology moving forward if this, you know, pandemic continues and we're in this spot in the fall to be able to educate our students. So those are certainly our top priorities when we put together this budget this year.
Okay, now to the numbers, the brass tacks. Our total proposed budget for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year is reflective of a one-point-one percent increase in expenditures. That's a two-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-six-hundred-ninety-six-dollar increase. The total budget next year would be twenty-one, three-fifty-six, four-forty-two. That number has come together with a lot of effort on the administrative team's part in looking at line items, crunching numbers, taking a hard look and not just, you know, what did we spend in the past, but what do we really need to buy? So those are, it was a group effort. The left side of this budget is our expenditures. The right side shows our revenue. Some key points on our revenue side of the budget is the state aid. That is down significantly from the prior year. We're kind of hoping that that's going to change because when you, if you scroll down to the bottom, you notice that we have, plugging the gap a little bit, is the use of reserves and fund balance. And we want to discourage using reserves to balance the budget. It's like taking money out of your savings account every year to balance your budget. Eventually, that savings account is reduced and it's, you don't want to do that. So, and especially this year, as we've embarked upon our capital project, you know, we want to also start looking at replenishing that. So we certainly don't want to be reducing. So we're kind of hoping that the state aid numbers come in higher. We've got some good news over the weekend. We won't have final numbers on that until the beginning of April, so we'll come back and revisit that at that time. And also is reflective of a, this number is just showing all of our revenue opportunities that are available to us. So the property tax cap, the property tax on here shows us going out to the tax cap calculation of one-point-nine-five percent. Let's see. Let's dive a little bit into what our expenditure assumptions are. We're kind of hoping in the fall, obviously, things will be back to normal and we'll have all of our full extracurricular activities in our budget. Salaries that are calculated in here, you'll see, are as per the employment contracts with each bargaining unit and anticipating an increase for the confidential staff at three percent and then the addition of a point-five music teacher at the elementary school. Benefits, our health insurance, we've been told is going up seven percent this year. Our TRS, which is our teacher retirement system, that is up slightly. And our ERS, which is the other employees, is up slightly as well. On the equipment side of things, this year, our transportation department took a hard look at things and we determined that we could go a year without any of the larger buses, but we do really need to replace two of the smaller sedans. The trade-in value on those is sixteen thousand, so the net cost to the district will be less that amount. And also, we're looking to replace a plow truck. John talked a little bit about this capital outlay project. We plan to continue on with one of those in the budget again next year. They're aided at ninety-two-point-seven percent. It's a great thing to do annually to take on a small project that can't wait till another capital project or just do little things as you go. We've used the last two years to replace the PA system at the elementary school and at the high school. And next year, we're anticipating that we'll be doing a reconstruction of the entryways, some entryways and flooring at the high school for some safety and security issues. Expenditures make up, for salaries, that makes up about forty-three-point-one-six percent of our budget expenditures. Again, that was contractual obligations and the three percent for the managerial confidential employees. Overall, that's going up three-point-four-eight percent from prior year. Our benefits, that's about twenty-one-point-five-one percent of our budget. Overall, that's going up four-point-one percent. Some things are remaining flat. Other things are going up a little bit more. Debt service, this is what, you know, bonds for prior capital projects that we pay. And again, this is, this is, this also generates the, this is what generates the building aid for us. So that's going down a little bit as we pay some things down. BOSI Services is about ten-point-three percent of our budget. That's going down slightly. We looked at a few things that just weren't being utilized to their full extent. So we see that going down slightly. Overall, as far as the expenditures are concerned, the rest, you know, you can see salaries, benefits, and all of that takes up about eighty-five percent of our budget. The remaining fifteen percent of the budget is things like contractual supplies, materials, repairs, equipment. Again, all things that we really took a hard look at and scrubbed numbers. State aid on the revenue side of things. State aid takes up about six, is about sixty-five-point-two percent of our revenue. Again, we, right now, we are showing a decrease in state aid from prior year's budget, but the legislative budget is due at April first. I don't know if anyone knew or heard. Over the weekend, there was some good news from the Assembly and Senate that came out, and it's looking that, we're hoping that we have an increase and we're able to adjust our revenue numbers slightly as a result of that. So one of the issues with the state aid that still was a little concerning, we don't know, again, how these things are going to shake out, but the stimulus money that everyone talks about that's coming from the feds. The issue with that is that the governor was using it to supplant those cuts. And the issue will be is he's used, was using all of that to supplement next year's budget. But what happens in twenty-two, twenty-three when that goes away? So we need to be looking forward and trying to be conservative, make sure that we're planning for the future. On the tax levy, again, that's another significant portion of our revenue. Right now, we're looking to, that, an increase of one-point-nine-five. That is the cap that we can raise that. That amounts to a hundred-and-three-thousand dollars, a hundred-and-three-seven-oh-five towards our budget. How that's calculated and some things that impact that are our pilots that come on and off of there in capital expenditures. So it's a, it's a pretty complicated calculation. Future years, we could have some impact on that number significantly as we have pilots coming on.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
If, that's, it's fine. If, if the money is not going to be there...
Which slide are you looking at?
The next one, the one where you said what happens when the budget, the federal money goes away in twenty-two, twenty-three. If we were to cut our budget in twenty-one, twenty-two, could we build up any sort of savings or reserves to deal with what's going to happen in twenty-two, twenty-three when the federal money is gone?
Let's have that conversation in April. I think we're going to be pleasantly surprised. I'm hoping we're going to be pleasantly surprised.
No, I just want to know if it's possible. I didn't ask tonight for consideration of what could we cut. I just want to know if it's possible to do that.
We've scrubbed the numbers pretty significantly. I don't know that there's any room on the expenditure side of things to reduce at this point in time.
So is it possible for a school district to save money one year in anticipation of reduced revenues the next year?
We do. So throughout the year, we budget for things, but things don't happen necessarily. For example, you'll see on one of the slides on here, per se, benefits. We have budgeted on there, for example, an expenditure for unemployment or termination benefits or workers' comp. If we don't have those expenditures, obviously, at the end of the fiscal year, we use that to either put into reserves. I'm sure if you were here last year, you noticed that you guys put some of the fund balance that was remaining at the end of the year was used to put into the employee retirement system reserve and also into the unemployment reserve. So when you, each year, we try and, you know, we set the budget for the next year. We need to plan for these things. If they don't happen, then obviously, yes, there is savings that happens at the end of the year, and that goes back in to fund balance. And also, as you'll see on one of the revenue slides, and if I can get forward a little bit, you notice that last bullet point, it says other revenues and use of fund balance is nine-point-four percent. Yes, prior year's fund balance sometimes gets used to supplement the next year's budget. So here's a, here's a little drill, here's maybe a better picture for you of the revenue budget. So you'll notice there appropriated fund balance and use of reserves. Those have been from savings from prior years, those types of accounts on our books. Does that make better sense and answer your question? We do save each year a little bit on our budget.
You're talking about like staffing cuts and program cuts in order that we could make this year the...
Well, that's what I wondered because we've gone from we're in dire trouble going to have to make drastic cuts and to all of a sudden, now we don't have to make any cuts. And then there is the question, what happens if the money doesn't come through in twenty-two, twenty-three? I want to know that. If we foresee that, can we make cuts?
So to answer your question, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And?
Are we at that point right now?
Yeah, I understand that without...
It'll be, yeah, it'll be clear over the next month. I had just sent an email to the board. Over the last twenty-four hours, we're hearing some very, very good news coming out of the one houses and the assemblies. We just received notification that over a three-year period, they want to fully fund our foundation aid. We received yesterday a spreadsheet where we're already going to be receiving ninety-five percent of it. So we're looking at almost an increase of four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for next year. So as, as the days and the weeks go on and this stuff becomes more realistic, we'll update you. But we're very happy with the information that's coming out that we are going to be fully funded, our state aid numbers are going to go up. So...
I read that. I just wanted to know what's possible, what's legal, what's possible, what's...
Anything is legal and anything is possible.
For the use of reserves, the half a million, do you know like what reserve are we talking about? And you kind of mentioned the bank account. What type of depletion would that be? I know we're fingers crossed that we're not going to have to use that money, but...
So in the mind that I gave you last week, there's a spreadsheet of those reserves. The one that I was targeting is the employee retirement system reserve, which fits at two-point-two million right now. I don't anticipate we're going to need to use that. So I...
Be the one if you did.
Yeah.
Which reserve did we put the balance of the capital project money into? Was it...
That was the unemployment reserve last year, which was put in there so that it could be easily accessed to use to the capital project. Okay.
John, you just said that we're going to be funded at ninety-five percent, but it meant a four-hundred-some-thousand-dollar increase. If we're only funded at ninety-five percent, how do we...
They want all the districts to be funded at a hundred percent over a three-year period. And I believe the stipulation was you would get two percent... Did you see the news yesterday? They were, it was either going to fund you at two percent increase of what you had last year or up to at least sixty percent, whichever was greater. They had a spreadsheet that came out of every single school district in New York State, and for some reason, we were at ninety-five percent. So it had a, and I can share that with the board. There was a spreadsheet that, again, we're still trying to figure out where these monies come from. But it looks like it's an increase of about four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for us for foundation aid. So I can share that with you, but things are still a little cloudy.
Right. I just caught that and I thought...
So that, what, the item that we're talking about with being funded ninety-five percent is the main piece, the biggest piece of our state aid budget on the spreadsheet here is nine million dollars is foundation aid. And he has kept that flat. Last year, he kept that flat, and he was proposing to keep that flat this year. Basically, what they're saying is if it was, if he was to fully fund that, which I can't remember the exact figure that was, we would get ninety-five percent of what, if that number was fully funded. So that's where the big increase is going to come next year.
We hope.
We, we're hoping, we're hoping. So, but this is, this is a good breakout of the state aid money. One of the things to point out on here is how he presented it is, he reduces it by this local funding adjustment of a seven-hundred-thousand dollars and then turns around and replaces that money with COVID, the COVID stimulus money of seven-hundred-nine-thousand. So it just kind of brings us right back to that thirteen-million-nine-hundred-seventeen-thousand. The Assembly and the Senate are advocating that he doesn't reduce and use that federal money to supplant. He wants it to be a supplement to the districts. So again, we will have better numbers after April first on the state aid side of this. And we think, given that it's such a large portion of our budget, it will make some changes as far as what we are going to be looking at as far as use of fund balance and reserves. The tax levy, one of the things, the blue line on here is our, the cap that we could have gone out to on each of those years. So again, a lot of things go into calculating that tax cap figure. It's not a flat two percent. I know, you know, that's kind of what people think across the board, you know, when they hear that the governor's capped it at two percent. It's two percent or CPI, but there's other calculations that go into it and capital levy exclusions and pilots and things like that. So this year, our calculation is one-point-nine-five percent. Again, that just shows our available options for the property tax. That's the max that we can, we can go out. Over the course of the last nine years, we've averaged point-eight-five of an increase. And over the last five years, that average has been point-five-three. So last year, we went out to zero. The year before that, it was one percent. And the year before that, it was one percent. This shows you what the tax, annual tax bill and the annual increase would be for a, given that tax levy, on an average, one-hundred, say, a one-hundred-thousand-dollar house would go up approximately forty dollars a year or about between three and three-fifty a month, if you were to break it out in that manner. Next steps, obviously, not on here is April first. We're kind of really hoping to have some information from the state aid. And then from there, the rest of the budget milestones along the way between now and May eighteenth. We, April twentieth is when the board meets to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two expenditure budget. We, April 20th is when the board meets to approve the '21, '22 expenditure budget. And then we send everything out to print. Is there any question? And again, feel free, if any of you have questions, you can email John or I, and hopefully, we can get you an answer.
If we use $500,000 of our reserve, what's left in it?
That particular line that I was talking about, it was a $2.2 million reserve, and it would be 1.7. I don't anticipate that we're going to need to use that.
How much are we allowed to keep in that sum?
Each reserve has its own requirements. One of the things for that is, that one in particular is the Employee Retirement Reserve. It has restrictions on how we fund it and how we take money out of it. It can only be used to pay retirement expenses. And what we would have used that for would be to pay those, to put that towards those expenses next year. I don't, again, don't anticipate that we're going to need to do that.
Legislature has come out now with your, your balance used to be only 4%. Now, the Senate said 8, and I think the House said 6. So they're increasing the amount of monies that you can put in your...
So that's changed from last Thursday?
That has changed, because they want you around 4% as we discussed.
Yeah.
And now they're looking, like I said, I believe the Senate said 8 and the House said 6. So they're raising, they're raising the ceiling on that. And I will tell you that if you're smart, you're going to, you're going to do that. You're going to, any monies that you have, you're going to save for any day.
It makes it a lot easier, I think, for you to, again, you don't have all those, where do I put this money at the end of the year? Do I put it in this reserve? Do I put it in that reserve? Which reserve can I access? What do I anticipate ahead for expenditures? So it gives you a lot more flexibility with what you do at the end of the year, with what you have left. So if we don't spend everything and we have fund balance, those conversations at the end of the year look a lot different than in the past. Okay, if I don't have any more questions?
Pete, is there any, is okay?
No.
Okay. Rule of Minutes. Beer is out at the minutes of the February 23rd regular meeting. Be approved? Get a motion?
So.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Is it a request? All in favor? Group warns. Beer is out after the average bills payment on March 4th, March 10th. Warrants in the general plan with order opposed to approve. Okay, got it.
So.
One second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Beer is out after, I guess it's, will the attached treasuries report be approved? Any motion?
No motion.
In a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Passes. Under reports, is there anything else?
I think you heard enough.
You could. John?
Sure, just a couple of updates. The musical is this weekend, although it will look and feel different. I know Wendy, Danielle, and Dave have done an excellent job in putting this together, given the current, you know, COVID guidelines. We do, we are restricting live audiences to only two, two people per cast member. But there's three shows, so at least each cast member will have the ability to give tickets out to six people to come and watch. And I'm excited to watch our students perform. Like I said, it's going to look and feel very different, but I'm just, I'm happy that our kids can still participate in it and that we're able to, you know, provide that for our community. The elementary school, just a reminder, has an early dismissal this Thursday for parent-teacher conferences. And Lynn, when is dismissal?
11:00 for buses. Parent pickup at 10:45.
10:45 for pickup and 11:00 for the buses. Just a quick update on our capital project. The paperwork is moving very swiftly at SED. They've already reviewed it twice, and SEI is responding to just some minor punch list items. We are hopeful to have final approval by the end of this week. Therefore, as I mentioned to you before, our bid schedule will hopefully be advertised by the end of March, which is Monday, March 29th. We will have a pre-bid meeting on site April 7th. That's when the various contractors come in after school is let out in the afternoon and evening. They learn about the project. They can answer questions about the project. They look at some of the design drawings, and then they have a chance to look at some of the work that's anticipated, see the campus, and get really all of their questions answered. Then the bids will be due about two weeks after, on April 20th, which is actually our board meeting. And then I mentioned to the board that we will have a special board meeting on the 27th to approve and award the bids, and that'll be at 6:00 PM. So I can say that expediting this application is going to be, I think, very beneficial to the district in doing that, so thank you. So our timeline is, is quick, but we're, I think we're right on target. And it looks like the first shovel will be in the Monday after school lets out. That's the anticipation of how quickly they want to get in here. I will assume DGA and SEI will be setting up, you know, trailers and getting equipment here towards the end of June, but obviously, we'll make sure that we're sensitive to, you know, the kids obviously still be in here, and the disruption will be minor. So that's, that's all very good news. I want to give a shout out to our SRO, Tim Westcott, and our elementary and middle school, high school counselors. Tim and the counselors have been creating lessons regarding Aaron's Law. A letter went out to the community, something that is now mandated by the state to do in K through 8 is to talk with students about healthy and unhealthy relationships, child sex abuse and exploitation. So Tim and the elementary counselors have been going into the classrooms with age-appropriate lessons, and I think, except for a couple of classrooms, they should finish up this week.
They are, they finished up today.
Yes, I did have a chance to go in and see Sarah and Tim talk to a group of first graders, and it was good, it was cute. The conversations were very informal, and I think the kids did learn a lot, had a lot of questions, and I think they did a fantastic job in presenting that information, you know, to that level. So I believe that they will start over at the middle school in the next few weeks.
After the break.
After the break, and we'll hit all the 6th through 8th graders at some point. And again, just congrats to our men's basketball team on their sectional championship. First one in 46 years. Now, I was also told they have a target on their back, because everybody now, next year's going to want to beat them. But I think we're going to be good for years to come, because we have some young kids coming up from JV that are going to add to the varsity, and we are going to lose a couple talented players, but we still have a young team, so happy, happy for Oakfield, happy to be a part of it. It was, it was a great game Saturday night. And that's all I have.
John, will the plays be live? Will those be live streamed, the plays at all, or no?
So due to, basically, we're not going to livestream it. Wendy put out information on how you can view it through a certain window. So they're going to copy your performance, and I believe there's a subscription that you have to pay, and then you can, either whether it's a single or a family, I can get you that information, but there is, there is a fee to...
So I was looking for it on the website the other night, and I just couldn't find that. Was it on, was it on a Facebook page? It's on, okay, I'm an old gate manager.
I'll make sure we get something up on the website regarding how to do that, so.
I support the errors.
Absolutely.
The flies have passed me.
Absolut. Absolutely, so we'll get that up. Yeah, I believe it's, I believe it's $10 maybe for...
Yeah, it's something along those lines. I'll check it, we'll get it worked out.
Okay. Yep.
Yeah.
Any other questions for John? Okay, thanks, John. New business? Beer is out item 72 through 710. Be approved, be accepted, John? Get a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Those heritage agreements, John, they were all set to go?
Yes, yes, we got those, and I apologize, we had those. I took them off the agenda when we sat down on Thursday, and then our attorneys came back on Friday, and they said, these need to go on there, everything is all set. The numbers haven't changed, it was just some wording. So yes, it's, it's all good to go.
Any other questions, sir?
What was your question then?
When we had met with John, Justin and I did Thursday, it appeared as though it was going to be struck from the agenda.
Which?
79 and 710, the heritage education contribution of the heritage pilot. But it sounds as though the attorneys worked out the wording there.
Correct, yes.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Communications? That'd be a, that would have to go. Table discussion?
I'm a little confused about some of the responses to the, and I brought up the email. So I wanted some clarification. John, I'm confused by the fact that you said my information was incorrect and inaccurate concerning the referrals. And I didn't have any reason to believe that those people giving me the info were giving me false. They've always been forthright and honest before in the past. So I just wondered, is, maybe I missed it, but is there, has, have the adults in the building who have daily direct contact with students been surveyed? So we have an accurate idea? There seems to be a difference in perception.
Well, let me, let me, let me first off address this. I have a concern when employees of this district, if they have a problem, reach out to board members. And that's not so much the problem, then the response should be, well, have you talked to the administrators? Who have you talked to? Who have you spoken to? Because when I receive emails like that, it bothers me in a sense where people want to complain, people want to do those things and not follow the chain of command. So I spoke with the high school administration, and those situations that you are hearing are very inaccurate, and there's additional information that you may not be aware of that certainly they're not going to share with you. And it's almost like just throwing administration under the bus. And I take exception to that, because the chain of command needs to be followed. If there's an employee in this district that has an issue, they need to go talk to their building principal or their union rep that will come and talk to the building principal, so they can resolve those issues and get their concerns out there. If it's not resolved at the building level, then it should come to me.
So is the, is, just help me understand, is the assumption that the chain of command is not followed?
Correct.
And so your understanding, from what I wrote, which I'm confused about?
By, I'm just saying by you bringing these things to my attention.
Was that the chain had not been followed, or that, can you, is there, I guess I'm confused by if employees go to the people they elected to represent them?
That's not following the chain of command.
Well, except if that chain had been followed, and for some reason, they were not comfortable furthering their approaches to the chain of command. I guess, I think it's an inaccurate assumption that the chain of command wasn't followed, and that, so then I'm confused about if there hasn't been any sort of survey, which several board members have asked for it several times. If there's a misalignment of perceptions, then wouldn't it be a good idea if we found out how that's coming about?
Warner?
Yes, John?
If a community member, or a teacher, or someone in this district comes to you with an issue, or they say something to you, obviously, you should listen, you should take notes. But your response should be, well, have you talked to your union? Have you talked to the principal? If it was a community member complaining about a class, you would certainly say, well, have you talked to the teacher?
Are you asking me if that of those were my responses, or?
No, that's what your response should be.
Are you interested in whether that was my response?
Well, I received your email, so I'm going to assume that Mr. Peterson, Mr. Montroy aren't aware of certain employees' concerns. So when I received your concern, which I do believe was strongly worded, that administration wasn't, wasn't doing their job, I immediately went to Matt and JC. And there is a whole story behind some of the things that you had mentioned.
Well, I did not strongly word it. I did not say that the administrators were not doing their job. And I did not mention, I don't know what backstory you're referring to, because I didn't tell you.
But for an employee of the district to start going to board members...
I did not specifically, I did not specifically mention specific incidences. I kept it general, and I did say to each of those people who have talked to me, have you gone to your chain of command? How many times have you gone to your chain of command? Is this a pattern? What steps have you taken to address it with your union? So I want you to be assured that I have done those things and that you are in error in your assumption that I did not.
Then I don't think I should be receiving those emails in the, in the type of way I'm receiving those emails. Because if a community member came to you about an issue with a teacher or something, you would say, go talk to that teacher, go talk to the building principals. That should, that should be the end of it.
The only person I'm supposed to talk to about these issues is you. That's what the state guidance in my training said. So that if I have issues that are brought to me by community members...
Right. Then a simple heads up of, hey, John, I had someone bend my ear about something, told them to go talk to a teacher or Mr. Peterson, that's fine. What I'm concerned about is...
Well, that's what I thought I was...
Whatever is, well, the way your emails are worded are very...
Are you talking about all my emails, or are you talking about a specific email?
I'm talking about an email that I received today.
Okay, so that's one email.
Right.
And I tried to be extremely tactful of that email, so if I failed that, I apologize. My concern was, and again, I could be confused, was that the issues, there seems to be some problem in perception. So I would like us to figure out what kind of, what's causing the difference in perception about disciplinary referrals.
Well, there's, I will tell you that there's 60 teachers up here. You're probably going to have 60 different perceptions. And for the perception of a few who may say that, as you said, don't feel supported or being ignored or were in the wrong, is not the perception of all.
I'm sure it's not perception of all, nothing, just like your administrators all have... I'm sure it's not perception of all, nothing, just like your administrators have different perceptions.
So, so that is my concern, that if, if someone comes to you, or, you know, you look for information from them, and this is what they're saying, I think it helps with the communication if you say, well, if you really feel that way, have you talked to your union president? Yes, well, what, what are they doing?
I did that.
Okay, is the union president now going to talk to Lynn or Matt? Well, it's not getting there, and if it does, and now all of a sudden there's an issue, it will certainly come to my level.
Well, my understanding is, from all the training and the counsel that I was given by the board president and other board members, was that when there's an issue that comes to me, that people bring me the issue, that I'm supposed to ask them, did they go through the right chain of command? And how many times? And what was their resolution? And then I'm supposed to bring it to your attention. So, that's what I did. And then, I haven't gotten the answer to have the staff, faculty and staff, the people who are in direct contact, cafeteria people with students on a daily basis, have they ever been surveyed to ask them?
No, we're not going to survey them, because I, I know the answers. I, it's gonna, it's gonna be eighty-five percent, great, fifteen percent, you're doing terrible.
How do you know that?
Because, Lorna, I've been in education for twenty-five years.
Well, I was...
And for every little tiny perception, I'm not going to survey the staff. If they have an issue, they come to us. I'm not going to be sending out surveys every week or every month on, how are we doing, and what did you think about this?
Did I suggest that?
You've, you've suggested numerous times for us to survey the staff.
I have, but I never suggested send it out every week or every month, and you well...
Well, the number of times that you've asked me to send out a survey...
The number of times I have asked you is numerous, and other board members have joined me in that suggestion. The number of times you have done it is zero.
Right.
So I guess I have to continue to ask that, so that the perceptions that don't seem to line up, so that we could clarify those.
But that's what I'm saying, what perceptions, you, um, I mean, Matt and Lynn are here, and J.C. are here. I don't understand when you say the perceptions don't seem to line up, the perceptions of one person, or two people, or the whole building?
Uh, somewhere in between them.
See, and there's also my concern, and I think this is why we're having this conversation, is the communication and the chain of command is, is being broken here. Whether people are coming to you, or you're, you're looking for information...
I beg your pardon?
That, I'm just saying, obviously, people are talking, you're talking back and forth with people.
I normally talk to people who speak to me. I normally respond. That's a polite and decent way to do it.
Correct.
So, the chain of command has not been broken?
Yes, it has, Lorna, because this is not your thing to deal with, unless it comes to the board level.
It is my thing.
To let us know of the information?
Which, I beg your pardon?
It's, it's for you to let us know of the, let me know of the information that's out there? And you step back?
And that's what I did.
Well...
I asked you today to follow up on an issue that was brought up last board meeting. And that's all I did, is ask for your update and your follow-up. And I felt like your response was kind of harsh and kind of confusing to me, because I was, I don't go to the administrators, I go to you. Which is the chain of command. So, I don't know how else to do that.
So, does it seem like the bottom line is there's some staff members that feel as though they use the chain of command, and they're, and they're not getting the action they need?
Yes.
So, we need some sort, somehow just sort of urge you with the top, John, with these particular staff members that you're talking about, and, and problem solving?
Well, I also think too, when I think around Matt, my time in, in Kendall, I, I don't know really any more person that I call a board member. It was always the union president, the captain.
Say that again, John?
It's always been really easy.
Sorry, you're telling me that no, that, no, nobody who works at Oakville-Lincoln has talked to you at all about any issue?
I've shut it down. I've had one phone call in the last six months that I've had, I've had, I've talked to John, I'm pretty sure that I have. I'll follow up, I've had parents that have called me.
You have had parents that have called?
Yeah, I have, and it was in regards to the, the sports, the last basketball thing, and I listened to what they had to say, and I brought my questions to me, and I, yeah.
Well, I think the assumption, perhaps inaccurately, is that well, in a small district, there are faculty and staff, and I guess that encompasses everybody, faculty and staff, who live in the district, and some, well, who's worked in the district.
Sure.
So then, when those people call me, or bring up something when I encounter them somewhere, then I pass that out. So I pass that out to John and to all of you, hoping to have some resolution. There were issues that we brought up, were brought up to discuss last time, some of them had been resolved, and then some were cured. So my goal was to get them cured. And perhaps I misunderstood, or but I needed that clarification. And again, the first time I asked you to survey the staff, you told me, it's too raw to survey the staff. And I thought, well, if things are raw, then it's exactly the time to survey the staff, to find out how their perception is of what good things you were trying to do, wasn't that they were good, why don't we find out some way to mesh them? So the fact that the requests have repeatedly come, is not that I am asking you to set a weekly or monthly survey, which I think you understand, it's that you, at some point, ask for some, and be willing to receive some honest feedback from the people who work here, about how the policies that we have devised and approved as a board, how are they actually working out on the front lines? And so that's my only request, that we could do that.
I am also not one to have, since I've been here, my door has always been open. The philosophy of our new administrative team has always been that their door is always open. I find surveys to be somewhat of, of, of an issue, kind of like Facebook and social media, where you have, you know, people that will hide behind a keyboard and throw that out there. I want to get to the root of the problem, which I think is, is, is the concern here. If somebody that works in this district has an issue, then let's get it resolved, but do it the right way, follow the chain of command. Either, either figure it out yourself, go to your building administrators, I mean, there's plenty of, you know, administrators, there's, there's other people that are administrators that aren't part of, you know, running a building, like Matt and Lynn. And if something doesn't get resolved, then it should come to me. This isn't something where people should be afraid or fearful, that's not the culture that we have here, and I use that as, I think it's an excuse when someone says, well, I just, I'm not going to say anything, because I'm going to get in trouble. It's 2021, you, you can't be afraid to do that. And so, understand that I have, I have concerns when I receive those emails from you, that people are coming to you with this stuff, you're letting me know. I take it and read your emails, very much so as, you know, that, okay, this is, this is how it is, this is what happened. So I immediately go to whoever, whoever it concerns. And sometimes I get that look in their face like, nobody's come to me, nobody's said a word.
John, does that concern you ever, that...
Very much so.
Your desire is to have an open door policy, and for everyone to feel comfortable coming to you? I know at one point, two years ago, you said that it was perfectly okay for a non-tenured staff member to bring an issue up before an administrator or you, and that it would be perfectly fine when everyone who's worked knows that a non-tenured staff member should say nothing to anybody about anything.
Well, but you know what, if you follow the chain of command, and you have a non-tenured teacher with an issue, go to your building, go to your building representative.
Which I think they did.
Great. So then they come to us, that, that, that is the, that's the chain of command. To answer, to answer your question...
Which question?
We, about the masks and, and students not abiding by, you know, the mask policy or whatever. Are there simple reminders each and every day? Yeah, I've walked out of the district office and walked to the cafeteria, and one of the kids goes, where's your mask? I totally forgot, so I ran back to the district office and grabbed my mask. Are there simple reminders? Yes. I cannot tell you that there is one kid in here that is outwardly defiantly saying, I'm not wearing a mask. If teachers are thinking that, and like I mentioned in my explanation, they're not addressing the students. I mean, Matt and J.C. are here, I, I mentioned to you that J.C. actually had to go talk to a couple of staff members and say, well, what happened? Were they, you know, did they, you know, yell and scream at you and tell you they weren't doing it? Well, I didn't really talk to them, I just wrote them up. So, there, there's more to this. There is not one kid in this building that is outwardly defiant of wearing a mask that we need to send home. Now, if a teacher continues to have a problem with that same kid, which has been addressed, we have not received additional referrals, in which, that's what I know Matt and J.C. has told that teacher after speaking with those children. So, the very fact that they don't feel that they're being supported, or that possibly the high school administration is not doing anything about it, I can tell you right now, J.C.'s not crumpling up referrals and throwing them in the trash.
So, would your understanding be that you mentioned a teacher who had, had an ongoing problem, and that it was addressed by the administrators, and then the teacher was told, if it happens again? Do you, is it your understanding that when the teacher reported the problem to the administrators, that that was the first time the problem had happened in that teacher's classroom?
No, no.
So...
Not with this particular teacher, no.
So by that very admission, this had been an ongoing and repetitive problem that the teacher had tried to deal with on the teacher's own recognizance? And it went to the administrators, and then the administrators, by what you told me here?
Spoke to the student.
Tried again? So, that's my very point, that by the time a teacher, a seasoned veteran teacher, reports it to the administration, by that very nature, and you just said, in this particular teacher's case, it had been an ongoing problem. Why is, if it's already been an ongoing problem, and then they finally bring it to an administrator's attention, why is it then...
That's where we step in.
And why is it then back on them to let it be a problem again before the administrator?
Because the administrators talk to the teacher, they talk to the family. I'm not going just to now kick someone out of here for the rest of the school year. Put your mask on, what's your problem, what's your deal? The student was like, okay. So we send him back to, it's like a kid being late to your class every single day. You may, the first two or three times, say, hey, stop being late. And then you're going to walk down to the main office and say, Mr. Peterson, you know, I've noticed that Johnny's showing up late to my class every, every day for thirty seconds, I can't figure it out. Mr. Peterson's going to go talk to that kid, and give him one final, hey, if this happens again, you're going to get written up, get to class. So it was addressed with the student, it was addressed with the family, the kid was sent back to class. And this teacher was told, if it happens again, if it continues to happen, and obviously they're not saying anything, write them up. I mean, correct, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, so there's a level of escalation when a kid is called into the principal's office to have a discussion about masks, which I thought was a very productive conversation. There's also some consultation with the teacher, letting them know where we stand, what the conversation entail, are you comfortable with this, how do you feel? Gosh, if this doesn't address the issue, please let us know, and we'll escalate it further. Would your case be even further, perhaps, see disciplinary action? And when you don't hear anything since that point, you have to make the assumption that the issue's been resolved.
So...
That's, that's one particular issue that I'm initially having.
Uh, the fact that if there's an ongoing problem with students not wearing their mask appropriately, they will be asked to go remote learning for a certain amount of time? That is only after the teacher's dealt with it repeatedly, the administrators have dealt with it repeatedly, is there a number of incidents that have to happen?
No.
As they're better repeated, so before we assume that there's repeated incidents, administrators are repeated incidents, what puts it at risk?
So, there's, there's been no repeat offenders on an degree to scale, or would want to move the student through them?
So, bottom line, it seems as though there could be some disagreement within the building amongst administration and teachers regarding mask wearing. I mean, we just leave it at that, or maybe it's a little more special, and they're on orders to keep in contact and move.
And I refer them back to the chain of command, and the only thing that I'm going to insist on is, I follow the chain of command, I refer people back to their union reps and their administrators. When those, when the disagreement in perception continues, I bring it to your attention. Because I know that as a teacher, when the board shut down, called, expressed no interest in relieving subsidious problems, it did not produce a good morale in this building. And this time is stressful enough, and I'm not going to leave it out here that the impression is that the teachers and staff members are ineffectual whiners, who don't build relationships with students, who don't follow the chain of command, those are statements which are in error. And by my bringing that up, the issue up to you, they should not be regarded as inappropriate, because in my opinion, they are not inappropriate. They have gone and sought recourse, and used their skills as seasoned veterans educated, and have done a good job. And...
I don't need to be told that, I know that they do that.
I disagree with you a hundred percent, that there is not one student in this school district who does not defy the mask-wearing guidance on a regular, continuing basis. So, I did what I thought was best in reporting to you an issue that has come up repeatedly, and brought to my attention legitimately by people who have gone through the chain of command. And if there is, I'm glad that you have addressed it with the administrators. There is a difference in perception, and I think that that should be looked into, so that that difference in perception, there could be a reconciliation about that.
At least fair to say, there'll be some heightened awareness to mask-wearing, right, amongst your staff?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Just out of curiosity, just, I won't prolong this discussion whatsoever, just out of curiosity, how often, Matt, and I'm going to put you on the spot for a second, J.C., you need to, how often? You have a regular meeting with your, with your building representative's schedule, so like, if I ask you, I'm your calendar, when's your next building rep meeting, what would you stop saying?
So, I have a wonderful relationship with the president of the O A T H D, she has...
What, your building rep?
No, building rep.
Okay, Lynn, do you have a building rep meeting?
No.
Like on a weekly or monthly basis?
I function more with the youth librarians, and I still...
But like, you don't have a standing need, so, so I guess what, you know, some systems use, and you've got different systems you form, and you might as well. Lynn, some systems use that building rep to communicate that feeling of, like Lorna's saying, the perception that a building has, and that kind of venue. I don't know if we're talking about communication here, there can be a level of communication that, you know, that could express the concern, and not so much of a, hey, it's X, Y, Z teacher, this is what a few teachers are saying right now, they feel like they're, you know, whatever. Whatever the feeling is, I don't, whatever the feeling is, I don't know what the circumstance is completely, but if they have that feeling, then it could be expressed with you in that venue, and then you can attack it from there. Because it seems like there's just a level that needs to, that could be solved, like just a little bit more communication from the union from there, because I know, I'm sure, Lorna talks to you, but like...
Those are good points, and I think those kind of relationships happen with formally, with the O A T leadership and teachers. They fall, they just know they can come to you and say, oh, I'm hearing this, I'm seeing this.
And it takes time, though, too, Matt, and I think that's the... And it takes time, too, and I think that's, that's the whole thing, it's not a union versus administration, it shouldn't be. It was when I first started teaching, and I don't, I think it's changed since then, but I think for me, when I was a building rep, I knew my building really, really, really well. And every two weeks, I'd meet with my principal and say, all right, here's, I heard this from three people, that was my rule, my rule. If I heard it from three people, I'm gonna bring it to you. If I didn't hear it from three people, I don't care.
I think that's an excellent idea, that must be your personality and your commitment to increasing that communication that made that happen in the building.
But I ran, I ran hard. Every day I made sure that I personally connected in a non-frauding, non-sexual way with all the people in the building and then kind of brought that together. But it takes a lot of work and, but I think there's good people on the staff that can do it. I don't even know who the building reps are for the elementary or the, for the high school, but I really think that they could be smarter than that and sit down and say, okay, how can we bring this together if we're getting better? We are, I feel like we're moving in a good direction. Just, because really, like you should really be the last person to talk to. I get it, I...
Well, I think I was the last person to talk to, I think they had exhausted their...
I think that one comment about masks, there's some sort of perception being made that there have been numerous complaints that have been unresolved. The reality is I have people coming to me and I hear when there's a concern, a variety of levels of concern, I hear it, I'm not afraid to express it. Every conversation I've had with students and staff regarding masks has been positive. Not to say that our kids are perfect, but it's been the overwhelming consensus that our kids are doing a great job. I mean, while they're not perfect, they're doing better than expected. So a kind of, a little bit of a reminder for masks is here, is the only major concern I've had and they have not been brought to my attention.
I have also heard the very positive thing, that most kids are so thrilled to be there, that they want to be here, they want to stay and they want to be here among the teachers and other students and stay for sure. I have also heard that it's commendable, I've trilled about it, I've said it many times, it's, that's great. And in addition, there's this other problem. So one last thing about the fourth question that I had brought up.
For a while on that, that's one, Laura, the change of guidance on mask-wearing compared to quarantines, I think helped also. I was saying to a parent yesterday that had a daughter that almost got wrapped up in the quarantine last week with a few positive cases that we had. And, you know, he encouraged her to always be wearing the mask even in maybe some of these areas that you don't necessarily have to so that you don't get wrapped up into the quarantines that may occur, that used to occur with the old policies. So I think the leniency that was offered in quarantine by making sure you're wearing your mask, if, you know, John, for to come positive, you know, I'm wearing my mask, is, has helped, at least for some of these students that maybe you were referred to that wanna be here, wanna be at school.
Right.
Happily, they're five days.
And I think the difference in the two buildings is, Lynn calls them the littles, they have a completely different attitude than junior and senior boys in springtime, they just do.
Well, and knowing that the musical's going on, there's extracurricular activities, sports are, a lot of kids are in sports. First thing their coaches say, or, you know, Wendy would say to her cast, you better have a mask on all day long because I can't afford you to get, you know, picked off if someone gets positive by quarantining, so...
Well, just for record, if I hadn't been approached by more than three people, I wouldn't put myself through the negative responses that I get when I bring an issue up like this just because I don't have anything better to do, because I do. And I don't enjoy it, so...
Well, and I guess I'll reiterate my concern is that if you're getting more than three people coming to you, I ask that those people use the chain of command appropriately because you're gonna get much more of a, you know, of an answer by going to your representatives, your building reps, your union reps, them taking it to administration, getting the problem resolved, and then if it's not, you follow the chain of command and you come to me. You know, reaching out to board members is, is really not the way to do it. And it only creates issues and concerns that we have here tonight.
Desperate times call for desperate measures and if those adult professionals, seasoned, caring, gifted educators felt like they could go to their administrators and you, I'm sure they would. And that's, I don't think they loved talking to me any as a board member. So I think if they felt comfortable doing that, they would. So the fourth question that I had brought up as a carryover, and I may have overlooked it in your response because maybe I'm just confused, I've asked it twice. What time did you say that the last administrator leaves the building on a regular school day?
Oh, boy. That, that depends. I mean, we were all here today. On any given night, I could be here till 10 o'clock with sports. Something for me, if there's absolutely nothing going on, I'm usually out of here. I wait for the buses at the elementary dismiss, so I'm usually here till almost 4 o'clock. Lynn, Matt, J.C., they all have different times. I mean, I know Lynn might be here later more so than Matt, but Matt's here earlier than Lynn, it's just because, so I can't really answer that for you.
So my concern is just if there are aides supervising kids in the high school, middle high school, is there a, an administrator here until that aide leaves, that supervisor, that aide in the supervisory position?
I'd say probably 95% of the time. I mean, when sports practices are going on in the evenings and the coaches with 15 athletes, I can tell you there's no administrator here.
You're using an aide with our drama club too, right?
Yeah, I mean, if Wendy's here with, with a couple of teachers and 20 cast members, there's not an administrator here. Mr. Bueller has mocked court, mocked trial, he was here till 11 o'clock one night, he was the only one here with a handful of students, so...
Right, and they're teachers. I asked specifically about an aide.
So the drama club?
There's, I mean, there's a, there's a possibility, but I don't know what teacher aides, what...
What's your point? You're just saying that there should always be an administrator that's an aide in the building supervising the child?
I asked the question about after-school time with an aide in the cafeteria. Now, John said due COVID, that there are very few students in the cafeteria for that aide to supervise and that they're only here for a few minutes between end of school and when?
So, Matt or J.C., on any given day?
So that has been the case, where there's been very few athletes in the cafeteria after school. We have some that stay, who stays the last minutes of four. There's more athletes now that the fall two scores have started.
Okay.
But that's a recent development. And there's usually an administrator here, but I can't say that the drama days weren't there before.
Okay.
Just you as well.
It's an issue that caused problems in the past in this cafeteria. There would be one aide and up to 40, 50 students, including Bosie's students returning, which is not so much of a problem now because of our Bosie's. And that one aide would be here with that many students alone and without backup. And that has been a concern to me and that's what I asked about last month and that's what I'm asking about this month. Is that situation going on or is that not going on?
I do not believe it's going on the way you just described it.
Okay.
I don't think there was an issue where there's more than even 20 or 25 kids in here. You said 40, with just one aide in here the whole time, no.
Well, it was common in the past and that was the issue that I wanted to know about. So thank you.
If I can just interject, Christine is here probably until 8 o'clock every, and she is...
Is Christine someone that the aide could appeal to for disciplinary issues?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
You're only here till 8:00. What the heck?
And sometimes Sundays, but that's okay. I got called out on that one this weekend. I was, I was here for an hour and my niece texted me. So yes, there, there is someone here, I'm here, and if I can't handle, if I can't address an issue, I have direct contact with every of the other administrators to, to help me handle that, so...
Okay. Did we have any committee meetings this past month? All right, let's move on to personnel. Be resolved that items 10-2 through 10-4 be approved via consent agenda, motion.
So, sorry, Jack, you go ahead.
Jack, again, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? We've got four retirees, we're handling those individually. Be resolved, we accept the letter of retirement from Margaret Casper effective June 30th, 2021, can we get a motion?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I want to say thank you very much to Peggy Casper for teaching, or not teaching, for being employed in our district. I was told today, 52 years, I knew that it was 50 years. She started in 1969 and she has driven school bus for 50 years. And that's a record. And so thank you very much to Peggy Casper. It was not my bus driver, but several of the rest of you have said she was yours.
She was a school bus driver, so you say 1969, I probably started on the bus in 81 or 82 and graduated in 94, so she was well before me, well, yeah. Wow, yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks.
All in favor of accepting that letter of retirement?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Be resolved to accept the letter of retirement from Kathleen Diver effective June 30th, 2021, can we get a motion?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Discussion?
I called up, I knew she had 34 years, Josh said she had 35 years in our district. And I know that when I encountered her at an appropriately socially-distanced restaurant, she told me a couple of months ago that she had done this for 34, 35 years and had not had an accident or disaster. And so she was looking forward to going out on a high note, she was grateful, she loved her job.
There's that guy, what?
Be careful, Kathy. But she was excited about, still excited about driving bus for Oakfield-Labour.
And you, Kathy, my kids are gonna miss you, I'm gonna miss you and appreciate all your years of service, so.
No accidents.
Thank you. All in favor of accepting the letter of retirement?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Be resolved to accept the letter of retirement for Leanne Cleveland effective June 30th, 2021, can we get a motion?
So moved.
Any second?
Okay.
Any discussion?
I asked Josh about this one too because it was the same 35 years, starting in 1986. And Josh pointed out that it's a cumulative 122 years of bus driving of those three people in our district. And I think that's one of the advantages of Oakfield-Labour, that for all our flaws, people want to stick here and, and serve and care and be good to our kids and that's a wonderful thing, thank you, Leanne Cleveland.
Thank you.
Hopefully Josh is analyzing just.
I did ask him about that actually, he said he's got something to the word, so...
Yeah. He's still on his journey there with our transportation and all the other districts around, so it hasn't hurt time, so we've got great longevity.
122 years.
All in favor of accepting the letter of retirement, can we include?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? And the last one, accept the letter of retirement for Susan Bryan effective June 28th, 2021, can we get a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I, Mrs. Bryan, like everyone else, put in a letter of resignation and it was a very nice, well-thought-out letter. Retirement, not resignation, sorry. But I think there was a line in there that stood out to me a little bit. She, she was almost asking herself, or she's saying she hopes that she made a difference. And I don't think there's really much of it out that she made a difference. I notice the whole household had a little nervous girl going in this year, my Lauren. And if it wasn't for Mrs. Bryan, I don't think she would have had such a great year. And I think, you know, everybody's known Mrs. Bryan for a really long time. I think that's another reason why Oakfield's such a great school, to be, yeah, people like Mrs. Bryan, who just really do care when her kids were there and she was with our moms and she's kind of carried that through. So thanks that you're leaving, Mrs. Bryan, and you're crazy to come back and sub, I don't know what you're... I'm in a little soak in my basement when I retire, Mrs. Bryan, you should think of the same thing. Enjoy yourself, thank you for what you've done. So thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor of accepting the letter of retirement for Susan Bryan?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Don't have any executive session tonight, so do close your remarks if anybody has any, or start with you, Jack, maybe?
Let's see, congrats to the basketball team. Great, you know, my kiddos were watching the parade, I was staying out my window watching them parade. It was a lifetime memory for sure, so really, really proud as a community member, as an O.A. alumni, that this is a really great opportunity that we had and our community had and our kids and the littles look up to the bigs and it's just, it's just really, really nice, so great job, congratulations and great meal.
That's right. Laura?
Break the leg to all the people in musical. Don't catch a cold, don't get scratchy, good luck to you. Of course, congratulations to both boys and girls basketball teams for going so far and for enjoying it so much. It seemed like they did. And thanks again to all Oakfield-Labour faculty, staff, administration for how hard they worked during COVID.
Jessica?
Oh, we're getting closer to the end. I can smell it almost, and I hope you can here, staff and administrators, this has been tough. I don't think it gets any easier, but I feel like the emails are getting less and less of these positive cases and I hope they just completely go away. Enjoy St. Patrick's Day tomorrow, dust off the shalalies, right, those little things that those Irishmen carry around. I know mine's all polished and ready to go, we're gonna have some fun on St. Patrick's Day. You should, you guys should too, so keep up the hard work and hang in there, Oakfield, thank you.
I see more districts going to the five-day-a-week schedule, I talked to a parent from Alba today and I think maybe this week they just want five days. And I remember when the, the school year started off, I think maybe you got some pressure from superintendents that five days wasn't going to be sustainable. So it's neat seeing districts go to the model that we've been able to uphold. So thanks for leading the way on that, John, thanks to the administration and staff that made a happy, one little hiccup there and some of it and that, and so it's, it's going really well. So hopefully we get to the finish line, we have too many more issues, so thank you for that.
Dan?
Congratulations again to the basketball teams and to all retirees, enjoy your new career, that'll be quite endeavors. We're in a home stretch and just to continue on with the faculty and staff administration and see it through and get through this year, thank you.
Katie, I'll turn it up in case you had anything.
I'm just, like, you know, we're able to get our sports season today, the kids are able to get their play now. We also think we're starting to reach larger groups and that's great, that they get these kids incentives. I know at my house, just kind of gives them that extra incentive to do those masks and everything else. And now they have something other than just school, look at sports and extra players. It's great and thanks to Christine and John for the budget and the workshop we worked today at the last meet. Definitely very helpful for us, I know, but the budget has been any easier than the rest of the school year and you guys, so thanks for putting it together for us.
Thanks, Pete.
Tim?
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm extremely impressed by the way we handled, by the way the district's handled, you know, dealing with the virus. And I take my hat off to... um, you know, dealing with the virus, and, uh, I take my hand off to whoever employee in the district wills.
Thanks, Tim. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Close? Passes? We're standing here in a second, thank you.
Thank you.